Good evening. This is the Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen. Notice of public hearing. If we could rise. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is for the public hearing, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Town of Eastline Board of Selectmen, notice of public hearing. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Eastline Board of Selectmen at 7:00 PM on June 4th, 2025, at the Eastline Town Hall, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyannick, Connecticut, to consider the following. One, to consider the proposed ordinance entitled, quote, "Ordinance Establishing the Eastline Climate Change and Coastal Resiliency Reserve Fund," end quote. The proposed ordinance is on file for public inspection at the office of the Eastline Town Clerk, 108 Pennsylvania Avenue, Nyannick, Connecticut, and at www.eeltownhall.com, to which reference may be had. Interested persons are invited to attend and be heard, dated at Eastline, Connecticut, on this 21st day of May, 2025, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
All right. So is there anyone that would like to address the Board of Selectmen? No one here that wishes to address? Okay. Then do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the hearing of June 4th, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed. All right. Next, we'll open the Eastline Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of June 4th, 2025. We're at the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room. This is immediately, we just closed the public hearing, and so we'll begin our agenda. We've already recited the Pledge of Allegiance. So at this time, are there any additional agenda consent calendar items? Need to be added to the agenda? I'm not aware of any. Okay. Are there any public delegations that wish to address the Board of Selectmen? Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 21st, 2025 as submitted.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion or changes to the minutes? Any corrections? Being done? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Dan, did we do delegations?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait. Sorry. Space out there for a second.
Yeah, we're moving right along here. Okay. And next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Yeah, pretty standard stuff. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar for June 4th, 2025, in the amount of $669.51.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to turn to new business. Tonight, we have a presentation by Greg Priest, a public safety consultant. And Greg, I'd invite you to the podium and floor is yours.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Let's find out. Am I just pushing this button?
I think you have to.
Are we good to go? Okay. Outstanding. Well, thank you so very much for the introduction. As you have introduced me, my name is Greg Priest, and I was asked to come down here just to speak a little bit about myself, a little bit about the company that I am part of, and perhaps help have a conversation with you about what the path forward would be. So what that looks like is, is how and why it is that I ended up in front of you tonight, a little bit about who we are, or my company is, the possibilities that that might offer for the town of Eastline, as well as answer any questions that you may have. I hope you like my PowerPoint. I like to move it quickly because it keeps people occupied especially. I said who I am, but here's the thing, I do have an Eastline connection, and I think that's important, the bearing. And as I said, kind of before we opened the meeting, I spend more time on your lacrosse field and your softball field, so I am invested in your community. As I talk about my connections to the community, although I do not have any direct personal kind of connections to your public safety, I've just had an opportunity to meet some of your leadership here today, so just wanted to let you know that I don't believe that I have any sort of disclosures to make in terms of personal relationships that would affect my ability to talk with you tonight. I've introduced the name of my company, and that is the logo that's up top there. Any good company is, has a great amount of people that are behind it, and I'll be glad to talk about that in a minute. So the ask that was presented to me, apparently my business card made it down to a member of the Selectmen, I was asked to come down, introduce myself, a little bit of possibilities. So it was a very brief ask. I've had the sum total of about three or four minutes worth of a conversation, so I hope I meet your expectations tonight. I'm glad to come back if I need to, or I will be glad to not ever talk to you again. I'm just joking. But what I will say is, is my motivation tonight is only as a matter to offer, to assist, not to tell, instruct, or anything else like that, but I am invested in the community peripherally, and I thought that that was an important part to it. So as far as outcomes tonight, I think that's very important when we speak about that. I'm here to learn, right? I'm also here to see what others may like, if you would like some perspective, if there are questions you may have with me, or if there are, as you develop your path forward. And then what I will tell you is, is I have no preconceived notions about where tonight goes. I may not be the best marketing person when it comes to business, but I have no preconceived notions. I am just here to help to the best of my ability. So I am wanting to tell you that you'll hear a little bit about my experience in a minute, but this is something that is bold, and I really want to make sure that this is forward in my presentation, which is, is I want you and me to understand that I have a personal belief in your public safety personnel right here today. I have no question but to tell you that I believe that the vast majority are professionals. They're trained, they're ready, they're doing the right thing, they're protecting you, and most of all, I legitimately believe that they care. I have not been in organizations where I felt that people didn't come to work and they didn't care. So if you'll permit me a little bit, because I can understand that there are public safety members who will watch this, both here in this community and other places, if you'll permit me a moment, maybe because the chief is here, I'll look at you awkwardly, but just to tell you, sir, you know, what I will tell you is, is I know that you're a good person, right? I know that you're working hard. I know that there are times when people in public safety feel very undervalued, perhaps lumped into things that are going on around the outside them, whether or not it's their fault, or they're engaged in it or not, but I know that they're providing excellent service, and I know that you will continue to do that regardless of where this goes tonight and where this goes tomorrow. I thought that was very important.
Mr. Priest, I'm sorry to interrupt. There's a microphone on the podium. I think your presentation is well heard by us up here, but members of the public may be missing parts of it.
You got it.
I'm watching the levels over here on the sound equipment.
Okay.
And when you turned to Chief Mason, it dipped way down.
All right. Let me tell you again, sir. I can, if you'd like. So I do think it's important, actually, I will say that again, if that was not picked up, because the other audience that is out here tonight is your men and women who are wearing uniforms, protecting your community, and I would like them to hear from me directly, from the guy who's standing behind the microphone. It's very important that you know that I know that you are good people, that you're working hard, right, that you are often lumped into things that are going on or outside of you, and also that we know that sometimes people in public safety feel undervalued, and I know that they will continue to provide excellent service no matter what happens after this meeting and moving forward. So that being said, I do acknowledge some awareness of the situations that are going on, and in terms of that, what I will tell you is, is I am in no position to judge. I have no idea about what real facts are, what due process has been applied, what reasons that people behave in manners that they do, but I can tell you in my experience that they are vast, right? And what you mean is, is that then the outcomes are vast in how you treat an individual fairly and how you protect your community. I do believe that there are such things as recoverable and unrecoverable mistakes, but I don't believe that that reflects on the human being, the individual. Basically, what I'm saying by that is, is when people make mistakes, it does not always mean that they are a bad person. So my other expectation that I hope to share with you is, is that I do support a community approach to public safety. I've spent a multidisciplinary background, which I'll speak to in a little bit. I do believe you should look at public safety as a whole, and I do, would originally commend you, because I have started to look at your budget, you do identify things by the public safety category that is good and forward-thinking. I commend you for that. There are a lot of paths and options, but I do believe they are solvable problems. Challenging, no doubt, but I believe they're solvable. And the scope of work that I would say tonight, really, is this is about a conversation. I think we all leave with a little bit of perspective and direction. In terms of qualifications and credibility, this is a hard thing, hard to talk about yourself sometimes, especially when you are humble, but also when you have a varied audience who is going to consume what I have to say very differently. The chief will think differently of what I have to say, perhaps you and the people who are watching, both your citizens as well. But I would like to tell you that the multidisciplinary background is there. You can see all these cool little things that I put together to be able to show you with a nod to some formal education. But what I do want is to understand that before any time I get in front of a group of people, that there may be an eye that slips out, is that I give respect and acknowledgement for the other people that have helped to put me in the position. I like to think that I've been lifted up to those positions and not stepped on the backs of others to get there, and that's an important concept about how I think. So I do have to tell you who I am, what gives me some ability to stand in front of you. I started early, 14 years old. I was a volunteer firefighter, cadet, EMS, so I understand that background. I started in the career fire service in 1997. I don't want to tell you how many years that is, but it makes me feel a little old, but I have had the honor of leading two organizations, fire service organizations, and in the fire service, I do believe some of your credibility comes from having spent time in the different ranks moving up, which I did, ultimately retiring as the chief. But I did have some DNA bred in me early. I worked for a public safety division, so what that means is, is that I had a single chain of command that was responsible for all of the different facets of public safety. So that is where I've, I would suggest that I have learned that public safety is holistic. Little factoid for you, as part of moving forward in my career, I became a tactical paramedic, which means I provided medical care to SWAT teams on the way, both some, at the time as a civilian medic, for a federal team, some municipal teams, and a city team. But what that did is that helped build my relationships with law enforcement as a firefighter, and that ultimately led me to becoming a part-time police officer in Massachusetts in 2003, so over 20 years. I work in patrol only in part-time, but for the chief's benefit, I am fully post-certified in Massachusetts. I am a current fire chief and emergency management director right now. I would have to say this, because I'm sure some people will watch, but I do represent the best community and the state. They have some of the best town leadership and the best personnel that I know. No offense to present company. But I am here tonight. I will bring those experiences with me, but I am in my personal capacity here tonight, not representing my employer. As part of my other qualifications to be here, I do lead some professional associations here in Connecticut, and I participate in a national committee for active shooter response. I think it's important to say that I've held relevant trainings and certifications through the roles that I've held in different disciplines, and I have my master's degree in public administration from Marist, so a little shout-out to my alma mater there. My multidisciplinary background enables me and gives me the right to make just as many donut jokes as I can about pillow jokes, so if there's ever any confusion, I can drop the jokes on either side of it. I'm a very confused individual sometimes, but hopefully you see the levity in that. But I do have an interest and experience in leadership. I like to think of myself as thoughtful, credible, and fair, but what I do is, is I have a great reverence for those who lead, and you can lead from different places in an organization. And I value relationships significantly. So again, I'd like to go back to our public safety members. Chief, sorry, just because you're here, I'm going to look at you, but in, in our business, right, we have to be very, very careful when it is that we say that you've been there and you've done that, right? People tend to look down your nose. They want to know what your motives and your ideals are and what it is that you're here to do, right? Because we don't believe that there's experts in our field. I will tell you, I hope never to tell you that I am an expert in anything in public safety, but what I hope to tell you is, is I'm surrounded by an excellent team that works for my company, but I know you have experts in your own organization as well. And I think it's just important for me to say what it is that I am not, as it is to say what I am, and that's a nod to the chief, which is, is I'm a part-time police officer. I know a little bit, but I don't know your role. I never have. So it's important for me to tell him that right to his face, which is great that he's here, because I need to be accurate in my history and my experiences with you, but also to any colleagues there. And the reason why is because we want to move away from something called stolen valor, which is, is the idea that I take credit for something that I have not personally earned You notice that this popped up on the slide. I have to say it again. I did not get here alone. I have a wonderful team that has helped, you know, communicate with me about this experience here tonight and the company that has been set up. It's a little nod to them. They're expecting a lot out of me tonight. But I'm also answering the why too, because I know the chief and the other chiefs in your fire service, EMS, or anybody touching your public safety, they want to know what it is that my motives are up here. They want to know whether or not I'm humble. And the reason for me explaining it and taking an entire slide and a whole couple of minutes on that is because it's very important to build trust and confidence in how I communicate about myself. So let's talk about diversified public safety solutions. That is what it is that brings me here tonight. The catalyst for this was some like-minded, forward-thinking senior leaders, not necessarily chiefs, but they're up in the organizations, multidisciplinary backgrounds, and they have reputations that precede them, they have networks of relationships, but most importantly, what we got into the business of is, is we were consistently sought out for advice, we were providing advice and solutions, and that was effective. Our audiences were varied, the success and collaborations were very effective in how that worked for us, but there was no umbrella organization. There was no local consultant that was doing this that shared our team values, our approach, or the multidisciplinary background. So we also, our team members, including myself, have some experience doing consulting for others. We know that there's positives and negatives. There's a respect for it. Consulting can be a dirty word, depending on where it is that you go, what your opinions are on consultants, but what I will tell you is, is this is the genesis of diversified public safety solutions. We're registered, we're insured, we're an LLC, a group of advisors and associates, people who provide advice, people who are willing to come out and work with clients as well. They're all in senior leadership positions, so they bring relevance and credibility to it. Lastly, we believe in a product, right? Products are something that can be intellectual product, it can be producing a document. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but what I like to talk about in this particular part of this slide is it has to do with pace. Does anybody want to have a gigantic binder of things dropped off at you with an expectation to execute? That is where I believe DPSS tends to diverge. We like to provide that more, that intellectual support over the longer-term period of time, or at least for more. So you'll see, my marketing isn't really wonderful here at this point, but when I throw the "or," it means that I'm not necessarily saying that I'm the right person for this, but what I wanted to tell you is, is if you are going to look at a consultant, if you are going to go in a different path, here are some things that our team has, other teams may do better or worse, but it's important. We have this network of active and relevant leaders. They're not people who used to do this and who are out of the game. They're people who are in the game. There are a collective amount of people who, when we get into a room, or if we have conversations with each other, or we understand each perspective, we believe that our advice and solutions from that multidisciplinary perspective provides a better product, and none of us agree that there's the idea of a subject matter expert, but collectively in our network of folks, we believe that we can expand our ability to assess a situation and provide that. So we have people who are, come with different backgrounds. As you can tell, I'm not the best communicator in the world, but maybe I'm a data guy, or, you know, there's, there's other folks who can do better jobs at things, and I think the chief can, you know, I look at you again, sir, sorry to engage you in the presentation, but what I would say is, is you know that there are times where you have different people with different skill sets who need to come out, right? It's like tools, you need to learn how to bring them out at the right time, apply them in the right place, and that is one of the benefits that I believe that our organization prevents. These are just examples. I don't like to read slides too, too often, like verbatim, but there you go, you can see it. The asterisk on the end of the attorney is, we do have an attorney who provides advice to the organization, but we do not provide legal advice. If you needed to engage with that, we can certainly assist, but that is not the role of our organization. We believe that everything starts and ends local. That is the biggest thing that I can walk away from, is, is you have your local experts who are here, and there are decisions that you need to make with your perspective. But we also know that you don't like to be told what to do, and when I say "you," I mean collectively, nobody likes to be told what to do, even when you're in a paramilitary organization. We learn how to adapt, but that is part of it. But what would we be able to do is not necessarily equip you with telling you to make decisions, but what it is, is being able to translate for you, to change the languages between the disciplines, to change the language between, you know, people of different roles in the town. And what we would do is, is we're taking an informed perspective, but I believe it's less emotional, just because we are not in the fight every day, or we're not exposed to the same level of pressure or conditions that are in there. Again, active and relevant in the decisions, and there, as, as having worked in senior leadership, you also have to understand when you're giving advice, if you've never received advice, it's, sometimes it can be hard to hear it, so we try to give advice in a way that leaders can consume it. I always like to talk about vulnerabilities. You'll notice that all of the things on the screen there, talk about perceptions, but I can imagine that our vulnerabilities as an organization, as, again, my marketing skills hired at work here for you, but in terms of, we're, you know, the perception that we're new or unique, that we're part-time because we have other things going on, so we have divided loyalties, or the idea that because we've been exposed to different things in different areas of the state, that we're automatically going to come in and say, well, that's the way that it should be done here. But I believe that our strengths outweigh those perceptions, and what I mean by that is, is we're very well-informed on what's happening in public safety in the state, right? We've seen what's worked, we've seen what hasn't, and we understand where the trajectories are. I think we're more accessible and relatable. We're not flying in on planes, flying back, right? And we want you to feel supported, because we are invested in whatever it is that the advice or product that we may provide. And we are giving back to the state of Connecticut by providing the service to Eastline, because what we're doing is, is we don't want you to island, we don't want to build you the best mousetrap. We want to build on the relationships that I know already exist around in your communities that are around the outside of you. So here's my thoughts for Eastline specifically. You have a unique community. All communities are unique on the way in here, obviously, and I'm aware. You have a train that was going by, you have a military base, you have a major highway that's going through, you have a view of a nuclear power plant, right? So you have public safety considerations that are unique. Your community changes in composition over the summertime, so you also have to take those in as public safety. But if I go back and it's, the slide has grayed out a little bit, but you do have some very unique situations that I have not seen before. I've seen single issues in different, you know, one organization has something, but I would be remiss to say I have not seen it as widespread across different agencies. So what that lends to me is, is there is the potential for your community's perception over public safety, not as a result of any one particular thing, it's just there is a perception, a question about what is happening in public safety. So I couldn't think of a more exciting consultant word, but multi-dimensional, multi-dimensional trust, but the reality of it is, is what I'm trying to emphasize through that is, is there needs to be some trust-building back into the community, I think, and to develop some confidence in your public safety, and that's what I'm going to get to next, which is, if I had some thoughts, is, is right now, support for your existing public safety members, whether or not volunteer, career, sworn administrative, and supporting your existing leaders is absolutely critical in your path forward. But there are options, and I like pictures. So here's the picture for you. I like some analogies sometimes, every once in a while I have to mix it up, it can't all be adjustable, it's on a slide, but there's a reason for the picture that you see on the screen in front of you, and what that is, is, is there's a reason why it is that the windshield is bigger than the rearview mirror, right? We have to be forward-facing. I recommend that you are forward-facing, and you do have, in the face of challenges or situations, you do have the ability to write a blank slate and rebuild your public safety in the way that you want. By rebuilding, I don't mean necessarily replacing, I mean learning how to support. And you'll notice that I just dropped off the DPSS logo right there. That's very intentional, because I want to switch a little bit now, right? What I want to switch to is, is what I would consider to be kind of a citizen-like, maybe a citizen visitor, a close neighbor to you, with an informed perspective on public safety. I view things with, what I see is like the four Rs up there. I feel like I'm reasonable, realistic, I'm rational, and I'm really relationship-oriented. So as you process the rest of my presentation, know that that is my viewpoint on things. But what I will tell you is, is you'll, you'll find me picking the middle ground on a lot of things, but I don't think this is negotiable, is that you have to have collaboration and discussion with your existing professionals in public safety, even if you are having significant differences over opinion or what path to go forward. That will require some intestinal fortitude and patience, but my idea here is, is that what will be helpful is, is that, you know, the analogy of like a calm hand on the steering wheel. Don't do anything quickly or rash or, or move too fast with that, and get good advice as you're moving forward. I'd like to give some credit to a mentor of mine. I had to call him today to make sure I could use this on the slide, or I communicated with him, but I think right now, the leaders in public safety, and when I say leaders, I mean all the people down who might be riding a patrol car in the middle of the night, or riding an ambulance in the middle of the night, or in a firehouse, because you can lead from anywhere in an organization. But right now, leaders, this is, this is the time, as Commissioner Higgins would say, it's time to listen and to try and learn what is happening as you are leading. Now, that is his approach to how he approached DESF. I'm trying not to steal it from him, but it's pretty cool. I like it, so. Like to, think you should address some gaps, you know, you should be looking five years ahead, building from where it is that you are, and it's okay to take and say that you want to be the vision, you know, you want to be the model for what it is, and then you can make your real-time decisions from it. So sticky notes, where can you go from here? You could address your public safety issues in silos. I'm just going to address one department, right? You could address it holistically as public safety. You could go for a big report. You could go out, you know, are you going to get a big return investment on that, or is it going to be facilitated? Are you going to go and take, get a big report and have a local consultant help you implement it? A local consultant to work you all the way through it? Are you going to go with a very specialized industry consultant, bring somebody in and try to, to, to address it all at the same time, or, excuse me, each individual discipline? Or lastly, it is possible, you could work on this in-house. I know there's great people here, but are you going to hire and then support them and then hope that things turn out for the best? I don't know. So here's some, like, recommendations. I'm like the free hugs guy, you know, I'll just hand out what I think. Hopefully, it's, it's received respectful. I do think you should look at public safety as a whole. I think you may want to look at public safety and say, do we have any immediate high-level gaps? Like, is there a service not being provided? Is there something that's happening right now that isn't actually happening? API is a little, little sign, or, excuse me, it's a little acronym that I use sometimes. It's Analyze, Plan, Implement, and Evaluate. I think you can do that on your high-level gap analysis. And this one, it sounds easy, but it may be a little bit more challenging, but I think right now might be a time for the community to communicate. And what I mean about communicate is, is confidence in your public safety. That's going to be important for your citizens, important for each other, important for the men and women who wear uniforms across all of the different disciplines. It's also about making sure that you set your expectations. It's okay to have high expectations, but then you have to show and exemplify them, everybody involved as well. And then, it's important, you have to say you care, and then you have to provide the action to support them. Not saying that anybody isn't doing any of these things, that's my caveat, and again, this is where I say I'm still in the town over, I don't know exactly, but these are just things. And then I move on and I just say, just fill your vacant leaderships very thoughtfully. It will require strong leaders coming in to adapt to these conditions, and then be very cautious, sometimes treating a symptom versus treating the root cause, and the way you can look for root causes is, is making sure that you're asking and then listening for understanding. This is the way you want. Sometimes you gotta be ready to accept and own the opportunities for improvement, as well as being open-minded, using best practices, but you have to understand that local conditions have a lot of influence on your local conditions. And then wherever your solutions may lie after you get here, right? You may have structural things that you have to address. Some communities have gone to the public safety director, or some people have changed commission structures. You know, I digress on that. Those are for future conversations. So switching back to DPSS, if we would like to talk more, we're absolutely very glad to do that, talk more individually, but it would be time, I would bring others, and most importantly, I think this will probably be good for the chief to hear, certainly have identified a law enforcement associate, you know, used to run a large police chiefs association in Connecticut, very well-respected, also has a background in engagement with the fire services as well, is moving into a public safety director position as well. So he may not be as long-winded as I am, he might be more fun to listen to, but I do think he would be a good resource. But as far as we are concerned, as an organization, as a company, if we were coming in, we would be very careful, be very thoughtful, right? Because understanding that when we're talking about things like this, we're dealing with a peer's livelihood and the emotion that comes with it, but we're also dealing about mission-critical operations. What are front services that are being provided? And there's a public trust that goes with that. We would make sure we understand who the owners, right? The owners are the fine people sitting in front of me for the public safety there, but we would be there to provide support, but really, we're working for the community and not necessarily an individual. So in closing, that's it. I've tried to be as transparent as possible with all of my involvement in other areas, so hopefully I'm perceived as ethical in front of you. My orientation is simply here to help, not really as a business opportunity I can probably, you know, stand, because I didn't fly across the country to tell you cool things about myself. I'm literally in my backyard right now. So I may have this up here, because I'm sure this will be going around in some areas, you know, and there will be public and peer opinion. I mean, there's some implications to me, but hopefully I've done a good job of demonstrating I can manage the responsibilities as I have over the course of my career, that I'm realistic and honest with my experiences, and that I have a team behind me. I encourage you to do the same with your teams as well. And then I threw this up there, because I think those words are pretty important right now, trust, respect, intentions, and alignment. It's a very complicated mix in a community where you're under, under pressure. So whatever your- So whatever your perceptions would be of your situation and my presentation and anything else, I'm perfectly happy to serve as a resource for you. I would be glad to have DPSS be part of that, but I would also be the guy who's living right next door and happy to pick up my cellphone and try to give you some on-the-spot advice. And with that, I will be glad to take any questions that you may have of me.
Thank you, Greg, I appreciate your presentation. Any questions from the panel?
I'll lead off. So when this, let's say, observation of our public service capacities right now, is this done on-site?
So you would be referring to an observation, meaning if diversified public safety solutions would come in?
Yes.
Absolutely, 100%, the first thing, I mean, right off the hitch? It's being able to communicate open and transparent with people who are peers, to be able to understand, be sympathetic, and trying to gather facts, facts is the first place to start.
And is the, are the services provided by your firm? How are, how are the fees structured?
That's a wonderful question, ma'am. So the first thing that, how I would answer is, is I would have to understand what it is, that the scope that it is that you're asking us to do. Scopes can go in various directions. We can build something that is a little bit more tailored, a little bit more informal. You know, if you're looking for, you know, a 30-page report and lots of recommendations, that isn't my first preference as a consultant. I believe more in the intellectual-type property, I mean, I'm willing to put things in writing, it's not saying that we just, you know, dance around behind the scenes and have conversations. But I think there is much more, when you can communicate directly with somebody here, process, then present, and go back and forth with that. So I want to go back onto that, which is, is I would have to have a much more robust conversation with the stakeholders about what exactly it is that you would like us to do. Because then I can determine the resources that I have available, and then the amount of time that's necessary to come in to be able to help you with that.
And so would you give us a set price, once you had done this? Once you had done, made these observations and decided what needed to be done? Would you give us a price as to how much that's going to cost? Are we, how are we going to budget this? Because unfortunately, we have to budget.
Absolutely, so the first is, is, you know, we would want to have a discussion about what your procurement process would be for something like this. If, you know, that's, you know, first and foremost, what your procurement process is, how you would like us to approach this. We would then present you with a quote or a proposal based upon a conversation with you. It is what I would consider to be fairly standard in the industry, when you're dealing with a project of this size and complexity. It would be an initial project price, and then we can choose to build in additional work into the scope of work after that. But I, I truly respect the questions and where we are going, but I would first tell you, I would love to know more about what you would like to do with your public safety or how you would want to approach it, before I really go too much further. Because there, as I said before, like, my, my background isn't in marketing, but, you know, I may not be the right consultant for this, right? There may be others, right, and they may not even need a consultant. But if it was the will of the board to say, hey, I want to do one, two, and three, we can certainly answer that. So hopefully that's, that's transparent.
Have you observed other communities in our area who have worked with you and your company?
I, I will be very transparent, which is, is I am not working in a compensated fashion for any of your neighboring communities.
But have you worked with some within the state?
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be comparable to the size of our community?
No.
Okay.
In the consulting capacity, no.
Would you interview all personnel individually, or would you use a team approach to doing that?
So again, I don't want to be repetitive, we would go to a scope of work and what you're asking of either me or the team, but I would highly recommend having an approach that involves engaging your personnel to understand what their current conditions are and to gather facts.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have some remarks, I guess, as much for the board as for you. I mean, as you, as you've kind of acknowledged several times, there's something of a crisis of confidence happening in our town. And when the townspeople call for help, they want to know, you know, that the right person is coming, that the good guys are coming. And I think collectively, the town is kind of in a position where we need to call for help, and that's why you're here. However, we cannot be any port in a storm, right? We, we have to make sure that we are choosing the right path forward, the right consultant.
Correct.
Or perhaps even if a consultant is necessary. I, I checked up on, on you and your, and your organization prior to your arrival here, and I called around, and I want to let the other board members know that I called a diverse array of people that I kind of found in my research, and they, they all spoke very highly of you and hold you in high regard. So I know that you are a well-esteemed member of the, the communities which you've worked with. That, that being said, it's hard to pick the best option when we only have one option. So I would encourage our board to keep exploring this. And you've done a wonderful presentation tonight, and it does, does a lot to instill confidence in me. But I think our search is just beginning, and I think it's okay to go slow with this, too. I mean, I know a crisis of confidence, everyone wants to put it behind them as quickly as possible, but if we're going to do this right, we should take some time. But I want to thank you for coming, and I'm going to pass off to my other board members.
I highly support that, I mean, I think you may have gotten the wrong telephone numbers, if anybody said anything nice about me, but no, I'm just joking. But yes, no, I, I would encourage that, you know, I would suggest looking at as many options that you feel is necessary, including other vendors or consultants, if that's the path that you see necessary.
So I'm not sure if the question's for you, Dan, or for Mr. Priest. So if, let's say hypothetically speaking, we were to hire you as a consultant, it looks like you have experience in, said, police, fire, paramedic, emergency management, all of that. Is there some areas that we would focus on? You know, or what is, like?
Well, I mean, in my mind, I mean, tonight was an opportunity to understand the services that Mr. Priest can provide. And we know that we're confronting change, you know, in, in organizationally and personnel. And to the extent that Mr. Priest and his firm is able to offer us some advice, I wanted to know about what they do and whether or not that is someone that we should consult. And I wanted the board to meet Mr. Priest and form their opinions, and whether or not they feel confident in working with him. If the need arises, I'm not sure exactly what the model is going to be, I think we're kind of figuring that out. But certainly wouldn't hurt, in my mind, have someone available to us to bounce ideas off of and to get perspective. So that, that's my, that was my thought, and that's my concern.
So I guess my next question would be, as a consultant, would you be, let's say, how do you go about gathering information? Like, do you, like, go through, let's say, the police department and shadow people? Or do you look at records? Do you, like, how do you go about doing that? Or is it something where we bring up issues to you and then, you know, like that? Like, I'm, I'm kind of trying to understand exactly how it all works.
Right, so I think what has to happen would be some level of direction, right? So to first like Cunningham's point, right? You're facing some issues in front of you. I think it's very reasonable to say, can we sit down with you and bounce a couple of ideas off of you? What are the best paths forward here? And that would be kind of, what I might suggest is, is option one. Before we start talking about, are we going to go into police department policies and interviewing people or shadowing people? I would want to understand what's the high level. I would, I would ask you, you know, perhaps it's, where is the vision for public safety? And then going into the particular organizations below that. But that, that has to be, I, I think I would say, a much more in-depth conversation in terms of, like, this is what we're looking to accomplish, we're looking to decide what to do with our public safety. Or it's, we're looking specifically to evaluate what's happening, you know, for your next police chief, and what are the processes and policies that are in place. So I'm not, I'm truly not trying to in any way seem like I'm dodging your question, but there is, when you say, when you say public safety. My recommendation, I think, you know, is, is to follow select from Deebel's idea, which is, is I think you should look at other options. I would never be, you know, as a, as a consumer, a taxpayer, and some other things, I think you need to look at options. My recommendation might be to talk to your leaders about what their input would be, and then decide what path you want to be on. Do you want just some basic, you know, kind of phone a friend? That's what we're great for, you know, which is, is tell us what you think about this, you know? That, that's something that we're very, very capable of doing, and we have people who are in the business that are able to answer those questions impartially. That would be my recommendation for where you might start. Or you could choose to, you know, go out to RFP and, you know, go for a, you know, national vendor and bring in lots of people, ask lots of questions, and do a big report. I, I would not discourage you from doing that either. I just would encourage you to make sure that you're looking at the implementation and acceptance of any recommendations that you take from anybody of that size.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Kevin?
Okay, my turn. So, thank you so much, I enjoyed your presentation. First, I want to thank you for starting with the utmost respect for our public safety professionals. We have incredible people here that do really so much good. So that was very nice. Some of the things that I wrote down that I favored was really the community approach. I like that, I think that that works, specific to our demographic, and it's how I worked, so I like that. I felt like you were authentic in your delivery, so anybody can come in with a presentation, right? That's how they present it. So when they're turning and they're looking at you and they're directly speaking to you, there's an authenticity to it, so I felt that, which was really great. I like the focus on values, the value, valuing of our community, partnering, and on relationships. Because it really is the key to our community, right? So quite often, I do note that I come from Board of Ed land, so I've been here two years. But the focus on partnering and relationships is key, is key there, it's key here, and it's key in our community, so, I love that. I also love the focus on having conversations, but mostly having those courageous conversations, right? Because quite often, people don't want to talk about the stuff that's really icky and the stuff that's happening. And that's sometimes why it gets worse, because they don't have the courage to actually have conversations and bring people in and have, you know, tough conversations. I did put a, I put a question mark, how many people are on your team?
So I have approximately six that are intimately involved with this. However, I've had conversations with numerous up-and-comers in the state who are interested. So not specifically about this job, but when we set out under this, it was to be able to gather people with a very diverse background across our network of relationships. So if I don't think that I have it in a core team right now, I know where to get it in Connecticut. But I also want to make sure that I'm also not doing like a shadow dance, too, which is, is like, ooh, I have all these things behind the curtain. You know, those are, those are obviously discussions that I would want to have before bringing anybody else in. I gave you, I mean, I am, I'm free to speak the name of the police chief that I have, but right now, you actually mentioned the word courageous. It's a little bit courageous when you're in the state and you're kind of on your home territory, and you're talking about helping when you have other people who are interested in what you're doing with your time when you're not actually at work. So I think that, you know, for now, what I would say is, is I'm very, very confident in finding people who I believe would be respected in your community, and I would check that before bringing them in. We're not going to go grab somebody from, who's like an next-door neighbor who there's, may have been conflict with, or somebody who's polarizing, right? We're going to look for somebody who is, you know, impartial as they possibly can be for that. But thank you for that question, ma'am.
All right, the other question that I did have that Roseanne actually touched on was any other towns that you've worked with? You know, anyone that has the demographic, you know, made, made up kind of like we do, and you answered that. Fees was another question, and I understand that that's kind of like a sliding scale at the moment. I think trying to picture, like, what is that actually going to look like? So just say hypothetically, we were to hire you to come in, what does that actually look like? I think that some are having trouble trying to see that. For myself, we've had, you know, consultants come in quite often over on the Board of Ed side, and I feel pretty confident that you or you'd be bringing different people in to kind of go in and gather your information and come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
That's.
I, I would, I would recommend, this is, this is me, and I'm kind of speaking with, if I was in this situation as the chief and I saw this going, I would say I would pick a limited engagement, something that can establish a clear budget, something that's within reason, and then say, help us work through a, you know, a work through a scope of work that has to do with what does your public safety look like right now? My recommendation, and I don't know if, I mean, I see the chief nodding, but it's identifying any critical gaps right now. We think we know, right, that there's just been a few problems, but we need to make sure that there's ambulances going, that there's fire trucks getting to calls, they're getting there at a reasonable amount of time, the police department is led, supported, right, and the right resources are there. That would be the area, if I was a chief, that I would want to know, which is, is is there a service not being provided? Can I confidently stand up and say, no, I know that public safety services are going to go out in the middle of the night regardless of what that is? So I, I would start there, I wouldn't go into a big, an enormous project with a gigantic scope of work until you're more comfortable and aligned with where it is that you would like your organizations to go. And I think that with some vision, that scope of work can be much more accurately tailored.
Okay, and that's all end of this, that I think that you had a good thought there as far as, we have one option, this is the first time we're having somebody come forward, which is great. But I would suggest to you to put some sort of fee scale, some sort of something that people could have in their scope, right? Because if he's going to bring somebody else forward, they very well may do, I, I'd just like to have something to be.
Sure, I think I can have a more robust conversation about what it is that you.
Doesn't have to be set in stone, I get it, but.
I will only say that, you know, again, I was just asked to come down and kind of talk a little bit. I didn't necessarily have the, the path forward, and I would be glad to listen a little bit more and tune that up for you and bring that back.
That's it, thank you.
I think he used a really good analogy, I was going to use dating, but he used phone or friend. And I think that's how relationships should start, is for us, once the dust settles here, for us to say, okay, we need help doing this. Bring you in, let's, let's look at the order of magnitude, what we got, give a task. And, and in my 35 years of business, is I developed relationships over time, pretty soon they became partners, meaning long-term partners. And I think if we started off slow, saying, okay, this, we got a task, what do you think? Let's have another set of eyes look at it before we set an opinion, or go put out a fire somewhere else, bad choice of words, but just, we're do, busy doing our job, but let's, let's give us some tests and try some projects and, and take a look at it. Say, hey, how can you help us, say, what would you do here? Give us a price on it, and we'll start, then.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of what I would like, more like a dating, we will start with lunch and coffee, whatever.
Sounds good.
Okay, so.
Do you take it with black or cream? I'm glad to go with you.
I'm not getting off. But no, I appreciate tonight, thanks a lot. And, and, and I, I'll never forget one time I hired an advertiser, who, we interviewed six of them, and one person actually did some homework on, on my business, instead of coming and telling me what they were going to do. And they, they went, got a little background, said, you know how good you are, you know how bad you are, you know we need to help with? This is what we found talking to your customers, or some of your other people, whatever. It was pretty impressive, you know, so, but we still started slow, and we ended up with a long-term relationship, it was good, so.
Boating, from South Carolina?
Huh?
We did a little bit of research, it's good to know you're here.
Sir?
Of course, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. So I guess I'll wrap up then. First of all, Greg, I want to thank you for taking your time tonight to address the board. You know, in my experience, you know, I sit in the office back there, and there's these studies that have been done, you know, years ago, that we paid a lot of money for, and they end up getting done, and then they sit on a shelf. And sometimes they, they don't get looked at. You know, it was great when they're doing the report, we have a presentation, and then, and then what? My idea in inviting you here wasn't so much to, you know, engage you in, in, you know, a large report project. I don't think that's really the help we need right now. I think the help we need is, okay, look, we, we have this situation, we need to make a decision, we need some guidance, you know. You know, Greg gave us, you know, we met him and, and, you know, he might be able to help us out. And I kind of agree with, with Don's idea that we start off slow and as there's questions we have, as we're trying to move through the issues that are in front of us, to the extent that we can engage you, hire you to advise us on those issues. And then as we build that confidence and trust.
Absolutely.
In you and in your organization, then, you know, when the larger issues come up or, or, you know, changes come up, then we might, if we think it's necessary to have another report or study, then that might be something we, we ask you to do. But I really was thinking more in terms of someone that we can call as a consultant that can say, here's what you're looking at, here's what you ought to be considering, these are the issues you need to be thinking about. A dynamic process and I think that's what we need, so.
Very comfortable with that. That is.
That's my thought and, and, but we will, we will see how everything goes and I, I appreciate very much you coming down tonight. And I'm sure I'll be in touch with you as, as we move forward and I get the sense of how the board feels of how we should, we should proceed.
Thank you so very much for your time. It's truly an honor. Thank you for leading your community. I know that is a thankless job sometimes, so.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Have a wonderful night.
You too.
Yes, ma'am. I do.
Okay, next on our agenda is to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing the East Line Climate Change and Coastal Resiliency Reserve Fund. So, do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve to enact the ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing the East Line Climate Change and Coastal Resiliency Reserve Fund, presented at the public hearing before the Board of Selectment on June fourth, twenty twenty-five. The effective date of the ordinance shall be ten days after newspaper publication of the notice of its adoption.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. You know, I think we're all aware of what this, the purpose of this, Eastern Climate Change and Coastal Resiliency Reserve Fund is, is for. It'll help us to have a, a fund available as, as we face climate conditions that, you know, like we lost the wall down at McCooks. But even more importantly, it'll help us in our credit rating with, you know, bond ratings. They're looking for coastal communities to have such a, a reserve fund. So it really benefits the town in multiple ways. Is there any further discussion about this? I'll move it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries.
If you don't mind, that would be effective date of June sixteen, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, and so it, it'll get published and then after it's published, ten days.
Sixteen would be the.
So.
Yeah, anticipated date.
Great, so, and our goal when we started off here was to have it be in place before the end of the fiscal year. So we've done that, so.
Cindy, do you need to make a new motion or something?
Do I need to amend it?
No.
No.
No, I just wanted to tell you what the intended.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I just heard your information.
Ah, got it.
Yeah, so the motion carried and, okay.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. All right, let's see. The next on the agenda is discussion on possible action annual Lions Club lease for the art show. Okay, so I think we do this every year for the Lions. It's not too controversial. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve and to authorize the first selectmen to enter into a lease agreement with the Nyanic Lions Club for the purpose of selling food in connection with the art show on July fifth and sixth, twenty twenty-five. The town grants to the Lions for the period of four P M. on Friday, July fourth and shall end at ten P M. on Sunday, July sixth. The right to use the land at the Town Hall on Pennsylvania Avenue, which is to be set aside for that purpose by the town.
Okay, so, do I hear a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I'm a little upset with number seven. No music for dancing shall be provided.
Do it yourself.
I think that we should have an alternative for this.
Yeah, I don't know. My dance card's full, so it won't matter. Okay, other than that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Being none, motion carries. The next is to approve departmental transfers. We said that the, that's going to be moved. We don't have all the paperwork we need tonight, so we'll schedule a special meeting. If it works, we'll try for five o'clock and maybe on Wednesday we'll do it by Zoom if that's available. Yeah, I think if, if we do it before the Board of Finance meeting, maybe, that'll give Kevin an extra day to put the numbers together if he needs it. So, is, does that work for everybody if we do it, a Zoom meeting at five o'clock on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay, so it should be, should be brief. All right, next is a special appropriation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget. Do I hear?
You're gonna, it looks like you're tabling that too?
Yeah.
Dan, that's tied to the first one.
Pardon me?
Yeah.
Those are tied together.
Oh, they are.
The budget transfer and the special appropriation, yes.
So all three are going to go over?
Just those, just those two. And then we need to do, we still need to do the three bond resolutions.
Correct.
Well, yeah, there's two, there's two appropriations, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
What we're going to do, so which.
So in other words, the approved departmental transfers and the approved operating budget are both going to be tabled till next week.
Correct.
But, but two F is not.
Correct.
Board of Ed stuff?
The Board of Ed, so we're going to go.
The bonding is going forward, yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're going to, we'll go forward with the bonding. Gotcha, so D and E is over and F we're going to go forward with. So, thank you, Kevin. So let's go to item F then, a special appropriation of three million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the Board of Education projects. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the resolution entitled Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating Three Million, Two Hundred and Ninety-Six Thousand Dollars for various Board of Education capital improvements and authorizing the issuance of three million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? We've seen this in a couple of different formats.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are we on two F? Are we just doing Board of Ed first and then the, the various town projects second?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we're just on that, yep. So this is the roof life extension, the Nyanic Center School roof replacement.
Turf.
Yeah, all, all those items, yep. And the bonding legal costs, yep.
Are these documents available to the public on our website? Yeah, okay.
They're online.
Yep.
Yep.
They'll be attached with the minutes.
Do you want me to read through those or we're good?
Don't read through them, please.
I don't need to, Greg.
Yeah, I think, yeah, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure, okay.
Thank you for asking. All right then, all in favor? We seconded it, right? Do we have a second? Yeah, okay. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? So motion carries. Okay. Next is G, special appropriation for three million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, various town projects. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the resolution entitled Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating Three Million, Six Hundred and Thirty-One Thousand Dollars for various public improvements and authorizing the issuance of three million, six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations and pending, pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Okay, and again, on the agenda, you can see the list of, of those various town projects. Any discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do I second?
I second.
You got a second? Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next, we have, let's see, a special appropriation of three million, twenty-three thousand for various sewer bonds. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following. Resolve that the resolution entitled Resolution Making Appropriations Aggregating Three Million, Twenty-Three Thousand Dollars for various sewer utilities improvements and authorizing the issuance of three million, twenty-three thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet said appropriations and pending, pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, a copy of which is attached here too, is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and the legal voters of the town at town meeting.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. I don't see that there's any old business to discuss tonight. Next, do we have any ex officio reports? Roseanne, I'll start that under the table here.
I'm all set for tonight.
Okay, Jason, anything?
I would just like to say that starts to stem, the organization running shows out of the planetarium is having a, a band called Need to Know this Friday from seven to nine, ten dollars, all ages. They'll be playing the music of Tom Petty and more.
All right, that sounds great. Yeah?
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Candace?
I do. I visited the Board of Education this past Monday night and they had numerous recognitions on the agenda, which was really nice. They also had a very interesting A I. presentation and how it's being used via Magic School in the middle school here and in the high school. So that was really awesome to be part of. The Eastline Education Fund is up and running and appropriate, they have granted several, several grants to our teachers across the district. And I actually have a list, so I'm going to speak to it in just a second. I just got to pull it up after this. The Black Sheep Run started tonight, so every Wednesday night, it's run, walk in town, it's a good time. Farmer's Market will be starting. I have Youth and Family and Park and Rec tomorrow and I want to get to that list because there's just so many. We've got a grant for tech with Gil Galant that will cover all the elementary schools in the amount of like eleven hundred dollars, which is amazing. Another one for Elms for Amy Fabri, I hope I'm saying that last, last name correctly, and that was nine hundred and fifty dollars. That was doing something with Nine Square in the Air. I'm not too sure what that entails, to be honest with you. Hover Cam Orbit Grant for Brad Allen over at the Eastline Middle School for six hundred and something, which was great. The Eastline Middle School Vegetable Garden, that was eleven hundred dollars. Planners to Support Executive Functioning over at the Eastline High School was four hundred dollars. The Cross Grade Level Book Buddies with Kristen Rock over at L B. H., another thousand dollars, which was great. K through one, play-based learning materials for the library and that's several teachers that are, that put into that grant over at Nyanic Center School, the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. We also have play-based of learning materials for Flanders School in the amount of thirteen hundred dollars. And then one more for collaborative learning via Thinking Classroom Model with Carla Frisbee at the Eastline Middle School for a thousand dollars. So the Eastline Foundation, School Foundation is just doing incredible work. They're hitting the ground running. It's absolutely fantastic. It's been, you know, such a, a work in progress for years. So to see that come to fruition is absolutely incredible and see teachers and children really benefiting from that is amazing. So kudos to them and I wanted to see that happen.
Oh, that's great. I mean, it's wonderful, the work they're doing and a lot of it is volunteer.
Oh, and it's their first year. They literally just got, you know, rolling, so they're off to a great start and so beneficial.
Is, is this through like just parents of like kids in schools or just like who is, who's on this?
The Eastline School Foundation, they all collaborated together. So Tim Hagan, Ryan Trader, Brian Sen, Barbara Senjess, all former Board of Education members.
Yes.
Formed this, so it's absolutely incredible.
Do you have a question?
Sure. Hopefully I can answer it.
The youth family services is tomorrow?
It's Thursday, that's to my knowledge. I could be wrong, but I, I thought it was, I thought it was tomorrow.
Oh, well, there's, it's usually on the second Thursday, I think, and we have.
Oh, you know what it is? It's Youth Coalition. Youth, I've got Youth Co, it's Youth Coalition, sorry.
There's also going to be an eighth grade award ceremony night.
On the twelfth.
On the twelfth. Are they?
They might, I'm not too sure if Sarah will, you know, make a consideration or whatever. She usually does when things are going on.
Okay, all right, thanks.
That's all I have?
Don?
No, I'm all set. The mime were canceled last month and don't start again until next week for my two commissions.
Okay. Well, let's see. I will report that with respect to the, the search for a new police chief. The job has been posted in several areas, I think Indeed, our own, our town website, the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association, they have posted it. And so I don't know as of today how many applications we've received, but we are receiving, at least it was ten the, the day ago when I was able to check. And I suspect there'll be more. The process that we've identified will be, once we receive the applicants, they'll be submitted, the viable ones will be submitted to the Connecticut Chief, Chiefs of Police Association, and which we are a member of and for no cost, they will do the initial screening, their subject matter experts, and they will provide the group that will go to the next level, which will go to the police commission that will review the finalists from the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association. And then the finalists from the police commission will go to the chair of the police commission and myself to make the final, the final finalists who we select. So we're going to have a three-tiered system and we'll keep you appraised as we move forward. That's really all I have for a report tonight.
So can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
The final leg of your three-tiered system.
Right.
You are the complement along with who else?
Would be the chairman of the police commission.
So there's only two?
There'd be two. Yeah.
I'd like to suggest there might be a couple more, just to be.
Well, there's going to be, you know, the, the idea right now is that we probably receive the two final candidates and as between the two, we would. Because it'd be contracting with those two.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just suggesting it because any hiring committee that I've been on has that three-leg and on your, on your final leg, usually you have at least five. I'm trying to think of that. I mean, the one that I, I served on the A D. is five or six. So that way, you know, you don't have just two people deciding. You have five. Just a thought.
Take a look at that, see if, maybe we could expand. I'm, I'm just, because I have to sign the contract.
Sure.
And the police commission is, I'll give some thought to that and see if, see if there's a, we can add people to that final level.
I would also just want to add to that, that don't be afraid to say neither of these candidates or any of these candidates and perhaps we need to extend our search. You know, sometimes when you have two candidates, you can create that false dichotomy. It's, oh, I got to choose this one or that one, but maybe.
Yeah, well, that's a good point too.
Yep, that was actually a very good point.
Yeah.
Jason, yes.
You know, we want to get it right and that's why we're going to have several layers and.
That's why I mentioned just.
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe it shouldn't just be two.
You know, I just.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it's not just two because you've had the police commission.
No, they.
The two is the final.
The final.
I understand.
Yeah.
But leading up to that, you had numerous opinions. So it's not just two people in the whole pro, making up the whole process.
Right, the, the idea would be at the end that if there are two finalists.
I understand.
I think maybe we all just kind of mirror the anxiety of, of the town here and we're all just like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, you know, it's always.
We all want to get it right.
That's right, and that's the goal. And maybe at the, the final level, maybe it should be three, so it's an odd number, maybe there's someone else we can add in there.
Can I ask, can I add two, please?
Yeah.
Sorry to jump on the bandwagon here.
No, no.
The first step would be the police chiefs.
The police chiefs.
Second step would be the police commission.
Commission.
That you're with also.
No, I'm not a voting member of the police.
I know you shouldn't be voting, but can you be in attendance for the interviews? They're going to be important to you every day, you know, and the Police Commission meets once a month or whatever. I've been just saying that the police chief, is there a way that you can eavesdrop or attend those interviews?
I mean, I, I, let me think about what's, let me get advice on what's appropriate. I mean, that's, um, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't want to be prejudiced by comments that are made. I, I was thinking I would just want to see the final ones, and maybe it should be part of the, the middle process.
Thank you.
Not cast in stone yet, so, that's a good suggestion. Any other suggestions?
Well, you could sort of, as we have with other commissions, you have an ex officio. You might be, an ex officio would sit in.
Yeah, I could sit in, yeah.
And not necessarily-
Right, would not, not vote. Yeah, and I think that would be, probably that is appropriate.
I mean, we have a wonderful Director of H R who could tell us best practices for this sort of thing, and I, I, of course, defer to their judgment, but, yeah, there's no harm in going slow, getting in a lot of input, and, you know, listening to a lot of people, because I think everyone in, everyone in our community has opinions about how we should go forward, and I think those, those opinions are all valid and, and should be heard.
Yeah, and I, you know, I have some guidance from our H R Director and other experts in the field. This is the process that's been suggested, but as I say, it's not cast in concrete. I think maybe it would be wise for me to sit as ex officio during the interview process with the Police Commission. And then, at the end, it might be wise to have three instead of just two, so you have a tiebreaker. All right, so that's where we're headed. Are there any, I didn't, I don't have any communications to share tonight. Is there any public comment this evening? Okay. All right, then, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for June fourth, twenty twenty-five at eight twelve P M.
All right. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?